I'd like to call the meeting to order, would you please call the roll?
Honorable Michael Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Swarthout.
Here.
Alderman Grumhaus.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Elliott.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Here.
Alderman Hadad.
Here.
Nine present, no absent, Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under my comments, I know we have a basketball game tonight, so I was going to try to keep them short, but I have a number of, I have a number of comments this evening. Recently, a resident, Scott Dent, wrote me, he is an 11-year-old, wrote me about a travel, traveling soccer team that he's on that was practicing in Lake Forest and moved out. And I just wanted to read his, his follow-up, because I directed him back to the school, who directed him onto someone else, and he said, "I'm writing, thank you for your response to the letter I wrote you in February, I know you're a really busy person, so I appreciate the time you took to read my letter and write me back. I have followed your advice and written to Dr. Griffith about the Lake Forest schools for indoor soccer practice, wrote to Ms. Van Arsdale about Norcroft Park, I also wrote to Lake Forest Environmental Policy Committee about their concerns. I hope I've now covered everyone in charge, there's so many letters that my mom is now helping." Thank you for your response." So, it seems like city government has, has got him moving. Secondly, on a more concerning note, the city of Lake Forest, as other cities have, we're not the only one, we are not being portioned out for this. The Osloak grant that we got for the park district has been delayed by the governor. And this has caused a severe problem within Lake Forest and other communities, because we are not able to start on the Route 60 Park and doing the work out there as quickly as we wanted to. As a fact, part of the matter of the grant is that you have to do work in the grant, you can't start and then get reimbursed, you have to do it with the grant. We have written a letter of protest, as all the other communities have, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that this is going to be an issue that faces not only Lake Forest, but other communities, because we could have to put off our, put off of our work, it's Route 60 Park, and worse comes to worse, we may have to rebid it and start all over again. So, I'm not happy about this development, and I just wanted to let the community know about it, so.
Any insight from the governor, from the staff, about why they're holding these things up?
There is absolutely no insight, I've asked Susan Garrett to get involved, she is asking for an audit of the funds, but there's absolutely no insight as to why this has just been held up. And I wish I could say it was just for Lake Forest, and this was something, but it's for every community that has applied for those grants. So, I just thought we should be, all be aware of it, because I know we've been pressing development going forward on 60 Park, and this may put a big dent in how we move forward. The other piece of good news, and David won't pat himself on the back for this, but I will, we sold our bonds today, and it was a very, shall we say spirited bid, and we came out about a point below where the Lake County bond sold a week ago, so we, the point below is good, not bad. So, I want to say thank you to David and to Kathy for doing what they did, we got the bonds sold, and we again did well for the citizens of Lake Forest, so thank you. The next item on my agenda is a proclamation. As you know, we've talked about it here before, but I'm here to talk about it again. Lake Forest is having its 100th celebration of Lake Forest Day this year, the Legion Post has been running the Lake Forest Day, and certainly something special's been put together for this Lake Forest Day. We've had active support by the Legion, and there has been a committee formed, this celebration is going to be going for five or six days this year, as opposed to just the two days that we usually have the carnival. It will kick off on Thursday evening, July 21st with a concert in the square, and then the ability to purchase flags, which the American Legion Post will have out for veterans. We'll have a ceremony, there will be events on Friday, there will be a Beach Bash on Saturday for the whole community, and this will feature Gary Sinise and Lieutenant Gan Gan down at the beach. We also have a professional water skiing show in, that will be, they are three-time national champions, who'll be coming in on Saturday afternoon to do a show out at the beach, which will be a first for our beach, but if you've never seen a 48-man pyramid pulled behind a boat, this will be your opportunity to do that. They are truly a magnificent team, and it will be fired up by a wonderful fireworks display that will happen out in the lake, and it'll be off the lake, and so the whole community is welcome to come, and we're looking forward to the event. And so, I need a proclamation tonight for Lake Forest Day celebration, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas the McInlach Post #264 of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day, with a view to bring together people from our city in further thence of civil interest and advancement of community fellowship, and whereas Lake Forest Community will be proclaiming the 100th anniversary of the American Legion Lake Forest Day in 2008, and whereas a centennial celebration will feature multiple days of events and activities for all ages taking place from July 31st to August 6th, and whereas the event, this centennial celebration of Lake Forest Day, will be vast and varied, involving over 100 community volunteers to be overseen by an ad hoc committee appointed by the mayor to be known as the Lake Forest Day Centennial Committee, and whereas the McInlach Post #264 of the American Legion honors the hundreds of past, present, and future American Legion members representing Lake Forest Day since 1908, therefore be it proclaimed that this Lake Forest Day Centennial Celebration is declared, declared to be a city fair, and in pursuance thereof, and Thursday, July 31st through Wednesday, August 6th shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and join in the special celebration in the spirit of camaraderie and goodwill in support of the ideas of our city. The 2008 residents are urged to spend their summer vacation in Lake Forest, and it's signed by me. Tonight, there are a number of Legion people here, Bud Turner, Dave Lee, Leroy Meyer, Chuck Branson, Dale Parsons, are just but a few, I know there were a few more that walked in at the end after I got the list, but I want to thank you gentlemen for everything that you've done for this town for all these years. Certainly, the veterans are a great supporter of our community, they continue to work tirelessly on this event, and your efforts in the 100th anniversary, I know you've been involved in all the, in all the initial planning stages and having the meetings, I've been part of several of those meetings, Alderman Luby has been part of several of those meetings, to get this event put together has been a monumental task, and I want to thank you gentlemen for everything that you do for our community. So, will one of you step forward to give you the proclamation? And I need a vote.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just want to know if that includes the city council meeting holiday on that week as well?
We're having a special meeting.
It's part of the show, David.
Right, exactly.
We're having a council's meeting.
Yes, we're part of the, we're part of the water ski show.
Next, I will need a resolution to create the ad hoc foundation committee, this Lake Forest Day Foundation Committee is going to disband as soon as Lake Forest Day is over. A number of the members of the American Legion are on this committee, as well as Jack Preschler and Art Wood, who have really formed this Lake Forest Day Foundation and moved forward. I can report that up till now, the Lake Forest Founda, Day Foundation, which is the fundraising arm of this, has raised over $750,000 towards their million-dollar goal of endowing the Lake Forest Day for the next 100 years, so they really have done a bang-up job on this, it, and it never continues to amaze me, the generosity within this city and the people who give to it. Last week, we got a $50,000 donation from one organization towards this event, so it's just, it's, it's unfathomable how much money people have given, and it's not just the big donations, it's the little donations, community, Sunset Foods has given the food and some sort of lower discount rate and some gift to it, so everyone is working towards this day, and I just want to thank you. But this would be a resolution, which is in the packet, to establish the ad hoc Lake Forest Day Centennial Committee. Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd be risked in not mentioning Debbie Saran, who is handling the gala at the beach, she is the chairman of that committee, and she's just done a bang-up job on that as well. So, thank you all, and with that, it will conclude my report, and I will turn it over to Acting City Manager Marcus Peschio.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, there's only one item under this report, and that is presentation by the executive director of Ragdale, Susan Tillot, for a community spotlight on Ragdale.
Marcus tells me that you have a lot of business to conduct tonight, and that I should be very brief and focused. I think it has something to do with basketball, but he didn't say that. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff and visitors, my name's Susan Tillot, I'm the executive director of the Ragdale Foundation. In case you don't know, Ragdale is the fourth-largest artist community in the country. This is a page from our newly redone website, just to tell you the mission. The Ragdale Foundation supports writers and artists in a retreat setting, and makes the arts more accessible to the public through three core programs, the Artist Residency Program, community programs, and preservation of the historic site. And I'm glad to say that all the news is good tonight. We finished our fiscal year with an $800,000 budget, well in the black. We now have about $3 million in the bank between endowment and cash reserves, and those of you who've been sitting there for a while know that wasn't always the case, so we're very pleased. It's a good thing, because we're about to undertake another big project. So, Peter, slide. The absolute center of the Ragdale property and the legacy of Howard Van Doren Shaw is this beautiful arts and crafts house here at 1230 North Green Bay Road. It was built by Shaw, who was a Chicago architect, in 1897 as a summer home for his family, and it's been lived in continuously ever since. Part of our arrangement with the city of Lake Forest is, in exchange for a 99-year lease on the property, the Ragdale Foundation takes the responsibility for the maintenance and preservation of the property. We've done a lot of work on the property, we've been kind of working around the crown jewel here, and about a year ago, we commissioned a Historic Structures Report by Johnson Lasky, which is a very fine preservation architecture firm in the city of Chicago. This is a several-hundred-page document, it costs $65,000, which is amazing when you think the original Ragdale House only cost five, so we're already into it by multiples. And I want to focus a little bit on the Historic Structures Report tonight, this is the most detailed report that's ever been done on this piece of property, which is owned by the city of Lake Forest. Marcus? Again, here's a picture of Ragdale from very early on, it looks almost exactly the same as it does today. This report, which was done by Ann Sullivan, who's an architectural historian, brings together by far the most detailed history and research that we've ever had on this property. Next. Shaw is certainly best known in this town from Market Square and Glen Rowan, but also some of the skyscrapers downtown. Next, buildings at the Art Institute, the Donely Publishing Building. But it, this is good. It was Ragdale where he really worked out his ideas, and this report goes into such depth, following where Shaw traveled in Europe, the houses that he saw there, some of those are on the slides there. Next, actual sketches from his notebook, and you can really kind of see where Ragdale came out of his love of the British arts and crafts movement. The Historic Structures Report, you can, next, really is in three major parts. The first looks at the periods of significance. Next, this is a very detailed chart that shows you three generations of Shaw family that lived there in the 111 years that the house has been there. Next, the first era, which becomes really the most important, the Shaw era, where Howard Van Doren Shaw and his wife Frances, who was one of the founders of Poetry Magazine, lived there with his parents and children. Next, the house then went to Howard and Frances's daughter Sylvia, the well-known sculptor of the bird girl. Next, and finally Alice Hayes, who was Sylvia's daughter and the founder of Ragdale. From looking at all those incidents, we determined that the late 1920s, just before Howard Van Doren Shaw's death, was the period that we most want to represent in the house. That's the fullest expression of Howard Van Doren Shaw's art and architecture. Next, the Historic Structures Report also documents all the changes made over time. In a sense, the body of the house hasn't changed that much, but every porch, every doorway, every window has been modified. Ann compared many, many sets of plans and family photographs. Next, and I wanted to just focus on one area for your entertainment and education. This is the south porch, where the fountain is. The picture on the left is pretty much how it looks today, you notice there's a roof and wooden pillars, but an earlier picture shows those kind of plump concrete pillars and some lattice work above. Next, and by knowing the ages of all the Shaw children, we were able to find out who was what age, when, when things were done, and the porch, this porch shows up over and over again, the fountain was really kind of instead of the swimming pool, this is where everybody would sit with their feet wet. Next, you can see that now those pillars are gone, there, there actually is sculpture where that, where the planters are today. We have already done a lot of restoration to this fountain, but there's, there's more to do. Next, inside, it's absolutely fascinating. Here are pictures of the three main rooms on the first floor of the Ragdale House from very early on. We're very lucky that the Shaws took a lot of pictures, and the house was well documented. And here's a priceless quote from the Architectural Review of 1904. "The rooms also have a fresh chintzy quality, particularly fitting to a country home, where the flower forms, the crisp foliage of the outer world can well invade the interiors." It's a slightly different interpretation of the word "chintzy" there, although we have been called shabby chic more than once. Next, by using Photoshop, Ann was able to really zero in on that little section of the wallpaper. Next, and actually find out that that pattern was called the saladon by CFA Boise, actually made in 1897. So, it's remarkable that we can find which coloring and which exact pattern was used. Next, of course, the house didn't stay static, this is where Shaw experimented, and this is, the picture on the left is the house, with the living room with the paneling, as it is today, and the pictures on the right are some of the paneling that Shaw used in other buildings, the top one being his library and his apartment downtown. So, it's thought that Shaw himself went from the Boise wallpaper to the paneling, probably in the 1920s. Next, the dining room is wonderful, people always walk in and love that wallpaper, it is actually not the original. Next, and I think this is fascinating, this is sort of forensic archaeology. The consultants did some scraping of the paint in the dining room, and went down layer by layer, this actually appears quite green on the slide, but you can see where the original Ragdale blue is, and in this case, it actually is a little bit more like Ragdale green. But we have, we've just never had this kind of detail, we always kind of argue about how much blue is there in the blue-green, but we actually know now. Next, the second part of the report, or I'm sorry, the third part of the report, is the zones of significance. There's no way we want to turn the Ragdale House into a museum, it's used for five writers at any one time, it's a very active space, so what we want to do is have what are called zones of significance. Next, the, you've already seen the living room and the dining room, the entry hall with that wonderful barrel vault is where you walk into the house. Next, and then the fourth room in the major zones of significance is what's called the plant room, any of you who've ever been over there and seen the room with all the geraniums in it. And you can see that little Shaw sideboard was probably actually a model he was working on for someone's garden, and I think that's one of the things that makes Ragdale so rich, is every detail you look at is something that was designed or used specifically for that house. I don't have pictures of the kitchen here, we actually have no photographs of the original kitchen. If you've been in the house, you know it's kind of a 1940s kitchen on one side, that's when the house was winterized, and there's a lot of sentiment in Shaw family members and residents not to take it back to some kind of ersatz 1897 kitchen. So, there's some of those decisions that still remain. The Ragdale Board is, has just received the preliminary version of this report and is really kind of digesting it. I said there's good new, I said there's only good news, well, there's good news and other news. The other news is that, well, the house originally cost $5,000, and it's structurally sound. The very detailed reports show that it will probably be about a $3 million project. All of the infrastructure systems need to be replaced, the heating, there was never air conditioning, of course, but if you're writing in a room for 20 hours a day, that's really different from sleeping on a sleeping porch at your grandmother's house. There's, there are leaky pipes waiting to cause disaster if we don't get to them, there are life safety issues for the five residents who work in this house, there's upgrading for computers that needs to happen, so all the systems need to be redone, and once we've punched all those holes in the plaster ceilings and behind the Boise wallpaper, we need to really redo all the surfaces. We just want you to know that we stand very committed to putting more money into your property, we've already put a million in, and we kind of gulped when we heard the 3 million, but I think this house is absolutely worth it. We're investigating the sliding scale of time versus money, the project goes up about $200,000 a year, so time is of the essence for us to raise some, but we're, we're really just in the process of planning the campaign, it will mean that we, we need a second campaign. We raised 5 million, so I have to believe that there's 3 million in this community for this house. So, we will, we will keep you posted, we're counting on the generosity that the mayor spoke of, but I think that this house is one of the things that just really embodies the values of home and family and community in Lake Forest. So, we're still thrilled to have it, even though it's a very expensive treasure, and we'll keep you posted on our progress. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Susan. As a, the first thing I did on this council, I remember being, and I'm the oldest member of the council still left up here, but the debate was, should we give the house to Ragdale, and what should we do? That was my first issue coming on to this council, and I have to say that you and your group and your board have done such a spectacular job at this, you really have made this a thriving, ongoing piece that I have to take honor when I go out in the community and I'm in northern Wisconsin, and you think, who in the heck would know about Ragdale in northern Wisconsin? Here's a group of people who know all about Ragdale and are coming down to do something. You know I was involved with the Three Arts Club, and they're supporting your program. I went to Terre Haute, Indiana to direct traffic at a, at a Bears thing, and people are asking me about Ragdale. It's amazing how much this is known, I mean, among the country, it's our treasure that we don't think much about, but boy, when you get out of this city, people know about it, so you've done a fantastic job, thank you very much.
That concludes the report.
Thank you. Comments by council members?
I just have one, I'm sitting next to my esteemed partner from the Fourth Ward, who will be receiving the Volunteer Center Lake Forest, Lake Bluffs Award on the 18th of April, honoring her for her service to the community. She's going to be recognized, Debbie will be recognized for her civic volunteer service on the ZBA Plan Commission in the city council, so it's a real award for a very hard worker in service. Let everybody know.
Congratulations, Debbie. That's right. She brings the average up in the Fourth Ward, doesn't she?
Sure moves us to another notch up.
She does. Any other comments by council members? Hearing none, council committee reports. Good news, Grumhaus, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor indicated earlier, we did have a very successful bond sale today, I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director Kathy Reunertson to take us through some of the details, and then we will have to come back and approve the ordinance authorizing the sale, the issuance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we had a very wonderful and successful sale today, and we will be seeking your approval on the bond ordinance. I have with me tonight Mr. Dan Forbes from Spear Financial, who was our financial advisor, and he is here to fill you in on the details of the sale.
Thank you. I promise to be very brief, I do have a Spear Financial letter and packet, which I hope you all have, and I will highlight a little bit from there. Why was the sale successful today? As you know, I'm sure you are well aware, that the financial markets have had a lot of anxiety and volatility, and the municipal market in particular has been turning to its consistently solid credits, and Lake Forest is clearly, in the country, one of the most consistent solid credits in the nation. As you know, your AAA rating is the highest category Moody's has, and in my packet, the last two pages is a summary of the Moody's report, or actually their written report, which go into details as to why you deserve that AAA rating. I usually highlight the good points of that, but it pretty much is all good, so I will leave that to your reading. But the first and primary reason that you received, the wonderful rate you received today, was the strong credit that has been consistent in the city, and I think you should pat yourselves on the back for that, and certainly take credit for it. We were fortunate today to be selling into a stable market, relatively speaking, rates had pretty much settled, we hadn't had any real major news that had spooked the municipal markets. You see that, if you look at my cover letter, the eight bids and the bids that were submitted, the bids were extremely close. The first and second place bids were five, 10 thousandths of a place difference, I think that's probably as close as I've ever seen, and if you even look to the first and eighth place or the last place bids, they were only eight one-hundredths off, it shows that you were pretty much, everyone was bidding at the very bottom of the market, and I think that is very important. One other thing I should just mention, in the Spear Financial format, we used an open auction format that allowed bidders, as in a true auction, to be able to improve their bids. The second and third place bidders bid 17 times, so they were kept coming back, they knew they weren't first, but they kept, kept coming back to improve their bids, and I think that also added to the ability for those bids to be so close. Finally, as the mayor mentioned, there was actually today a Lake Forest, Forest Preserve, excuse me, Lake County Forest Preserve District sale within a half hour of this sale, so you had a pretty good idea, it was, the bonds were slightly different, theirs were not bank-qualified, limited tax, but they were AAA rated, they had the same final maturity as, as your bonds, they came in, came in at about a 4.44 percent, your winning bid was a 3.65 percent, there are various factors, I think the most important thing is to take away that you did extremely well, vis-à-vis their bid, in pretty much the same footprint, and also at the same time of the market, so. The other pages in the pack, and I'm not going into the detail, there are, in the second and third page, just details of how the bids came in, whether they're bid with discount or premiums. or premiums. We have a page from the online bidding format that we use, which reflects, again, the number of bids and how the bidding progressed. And there is a debt service schedule in there to show you the actual dollar to the penny amounts that you will be paying in debt service, plus the Moody's report. Finally, we owe a great deal at Spear, a great deal of thanks to Alderman Graham House for all his help, and especially to Mr. Reinertson, who was a very solid advocate for the city with Moody's and was very instrumental making sure that this was a wonderful outcome. So, and also she made my life, they both made my life very easy, which I always appreciate. With that, oh, and final, thank you for hiring us, by the way, to be your financial advisor with respect to bonds. We are always very appreciative of that, especially with our first sale here. I'm here to answer any questions. We recommend, Spear Financial recommends that you accept the low bid of Harris Trust, Chicago, Illinois.
Any questions from the council on this?
Great job. Way to go.
I do have one comment on the ordinance before the motion comes up, and that's on page 15. We should add two words at the last line before Section 9, as restated, based on the action that the council took at the last meeting.
Okay. Great. You need a motion?
Yeah, let me just make one comment, which is, I just want to also thank both Kathy and her staff, who did a ton of work on this, and obviously went incredibly smoothly, and Dan and the folks at Spear. When we interviewed for new advisors last summer, they really stood out, and I have to say, they, you know, obviously proved themselves to be even better than advertised, which really made everyone's life a lot easier. And the city should be proud on this. As someone who's in the financial markets every day and has lived with the extreme volatility of the last three months, you know, as good as the credit of the city is, it's still a difficult market. We cut a little bit of a break, that it has settled down a little bit here, but, you know, I think at the end of the day, it was really the strength of the city and the strength of Kathy and staff and Spear selling here that really got us a really great sale. So with that, I'd love to take a motion.
Motion to accept the lowest bid.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Graham House?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Handad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thanks. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to add one comment to this, David, and this has to do with our overall city. Many people have talked to us about the caucus system, and if you read Moody's report carefully in full, you will find that one of the issues that we continue to keep our AAA rating is because of our system. Because we are not political, because we are not having infighting at all times, Moody's puts a higher level of regard to our city because of that. And so it actually is quite a reward for our city to have the system that we have, and I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that's one of the benefits of having it.
Public Works Committee report, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met and discussed the infrastructure improvement proposal for Western Avenue. Ken Magnus is here. We are looking for approval of an engineering firm to proceed with Phase 2 design work for Western Avenue. Clearly, Western Avenue, regardless of this winter, but especially because of it, needs some significant infrastructure improvements. This is a design phase that will also incorporate some options included in it, and the council in the future can make recommendations whether to incorporate some of these design improvements, because at that point we'll have drawings to bid and then make some selections after that. So Ken's here to answer any questions, and I'll try to answer any questions, but this is just for the work required for the engineering of this project.
Ken? Where's Ken?
Ken's in the back.
Oh, is he hiding?
He's hiding back there.
He's afraid I was going to ask him a question?
Oh, that...
He's sending a Shuriken shot.
The smart one, yeah.
What's the additional design cost that we're paying to develop these alternatives?
That's all...
I didn't get a good sense that we wanted to... I know, I guess we want to have the alternatives. I didn't get strong feeling of support when we discussed this before, but I'd just like to know how much we're going to pay to get the options.
No, that's all-inclusive in this price.
I understand. I understand. What additional, what is part of the, what part of the cost can be assigned to developing the option?
Oh, for the, like, they have...
Not significant?
No, non-significant.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
I'm looking for a...
I'll make a motion.
A recommendation.
I'll second that motion as a member of the committee.
This is to award the Western Avenue Improvement Infrastructure Streetscape Enhancement Project in the amount of $447,209. It's a big chunk of change, but it's a big project. So I have a motion and a second. I'd ask for a roll call.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Graham House?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Handad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Alderman Swarthout. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Does anyone wish to address the council on a non-agenda item this evening? Hearing none. I will move on to the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is approval of minutes. Any additions, corrections, alterations? Alderman Graham House?
Thank you. We need approval of authorized invoices and payrolls for the month of March totaling And then, secondly, we need authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses of April 2008.
The next item is the Alderman Luby area, the award of contract for alley resurfacing. Somehow he's become the alley king from the last conversation we had.
Just want to keep him open and running, right?
Open and running. And then, any questions on the alley resurfacing bids?
I just had a comment on them.
Go ahead. It's incredible pricing.
No, the pricing is fabulous, but I also, I think, and I don't know what the staff's going to do about notifying those neighbors, but I think it would be a good idea to make sure that we send some written notification to the neighbors, because that is their only way in and out of their garages and things, so they know when the project's going to happen. And I'm sure Alderman Hanrahan and myself will be happy to sign it, because it's in our ward.
Exactly.
Or at least part of it is. Part of it's in the First Ward as well, and I think that might be a good thing for the Alderman to let the neighbors know about.
Yeah. This project, as well as all our projects, we notify all the neighbors.
Okay.
I was also going to say, I was slightly uncomfortable with the, you know, some of the question marks about, you know, needing extraordinary supervision and that type of thing, and I just want to make sure that we're, you know, totally comfortable with the winning bidder here.
Oh, we're comfortable with their work, it's just that they need more supervision than you would like.
Couple of cowboys out there.
They're not always easy to deal with, but, you know, we accept that, but the end product is good.
Okay.
The next item is the award for the 2008 Annual Pavement Ceiling Coating Project. Any questions on this? And then finally, the last one is the proclamation of April 25, 2008, as Arbor Day. Any questions on these? That is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Graham House?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Handad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is ordinances, and this is the consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of final approval of the plat of subdivision and approval of special use permit in the form of a final development plan ordinance for Barra Woods. The site proposed for development is the former Barra campus located on Wesley and Sheridan Road. This is for first reasing, and Community Director Kathy Cerniak, you're going to go ahead, but before you start, I did want to make one comment here. I've watched most of the Plan Commission meetings as we've gone along here and watched the response from the public on this, and I did want to comment on the park at the back, the 2.8 acres. It has been brought up that there was some idea that this was going to be a saleable property, or we wish to sell this property. I wish to say that it is the mood of this council to not sell this property. It is the mood of this council, since it is part of the plan of the Park District, that this piece of property will be part of the Park District plan, and as such, it is not on the table for nice discussion, because it does belong to the city, it is part of the parks, and it will not be sold and it will not be built on. So I just want to make sure we know that upfront, because we have heard what the Plan Commission has to say, we have heard what the public has to say, and this piece is important to keep within the city portfolio, and it is part of the master plan of the parks. So I will be referring this over to the Park Board to look at further review of it, if they wanted to do anything further, but I just wanted to make sure the public upfront knew exactly where we stood on this piece of property, so it's not part of the debate for this evening's project. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, this petition is before you tonight after about 15 months of review, study, and lengthy discussion by the Plan Commission. The request before you tonight is to grant first reading of an ordinance which would grant tentative final approval of the plan of subdivision and approval of the associated special use permit. Before I talk about the development proposal in front of you, I thought it might be worthwhile just to take a few minutes to step back and remember that in, beginning in 2004, the Barra Community Planning Team was formed by then-Mayor Jack Preschlack. That planning team consisted of nine individuals, and they were charged with exploring alternatives for Barra Campus after we knew that DePaul was leaving. Alternatives that would create value, that would create a compatible development and a sustainable development. There was real concern that we don't see something happen to this property, someone move in, someone take over, and five years down the road, 10 years down the road, the community's right back in the same position of needing to decide what would happen with Barra Campus. The planning team was asked to engage the community in discussion of reuse options. I do know that those nine members of the team personally took it upon themselves, Alderman Hanrahan was a member of that team, to contact various not-for-profit agencies throughout the community, and also for-profit agencies, to see what opportunities existed for reuse of the campus. And finally, the planning team was asked to develop parameters. Again, I thought it would be worthwhile very quickly to talk about those parameters. The planning team put these before the City Council as a framework for guiding redevelopment of this site. And each of these that are checked have been achieved by the plan that you will see in just a moment. Old Main is preserved, the front lawn is preserved, the ravine is protected, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding uses, traffic volumes are compatible with the surrounding uses, and vehicle ingress and egress is also compatible with surrounding uses and existing streets. This plan does not, for the long term, provide for the reuse or adaptive reuse of the library or theater. The theater is gone. The library is being adaptively reused in the short term as the sales center for Barra Woods, but ultimately, the library will be torn down. So out of all of the parameters that the planning team had set, I think we are fortunate in seeing a plan that has achieved virtually all of those. The Plan Commission, as I said, talked about this project for 15 months. In all, I can summarize their discussions by telling you that their discussions generated more than 65 pages of minutes. I counted them today. Those are single-spaced, I might add. So the Plan Commission did not take this lightly. Just to mention the key points that they hit on, and I'm sure I'm missing some, they talked a lot about density, building massing, height, building separation. They talked about the south lawn. They talked a lot about adjacent development. They talked about Woodlands. They talked about South Park. They talked about the Northmore Neighborhood, Villa Turicum. They talked about ingress and egress. One of the first decisions the Plan Commission made was, and the City Council accepted through tentative approval, was to prohibit any vehicular access through the 2.8-acre city-owned property. They talked a lot about traffic generation and thought through how much traffic the proposed development would create in comparison to the traffic that was generated by Barra Campus when it was in its heyday. Plan Commission talked about Wesley and Sheridan Roads intersection. They did understand that the warrants were not met for adding turn lanes to that intersection. In fact, the warrants did not even come close to being met, although there were some members of the Plan Commission, and I believe some members of the council, that thought it would sure be nice to have a right turn lane. The Plan Commission actually stepped away from that issue, realizing that the demand was not there. I already mentioned, they talked about relationship to Woodlands Academy. There actually has been a transfer of a small portion of Woodlands Academy to Mr. Shaw. As these discussions have gone on, there has already been construction of a new water main for Woodlands Academy that will be connected to the water main that will eventually serve this property, improving water service to Woodlands Academy and providing for looping of water main through Barra Woods. They talked about parking for residents, visitors, and service vehicles, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. They also talked about the potential need for future parking. To my knowledge, that foresight hasn't occurred with other projects in the city. Sometimes with projects, I'll use Presbyterian Homes as an example, we hear years later, three years later, 10 years later, that there are more cars in the development than originally anticipated. The Plan Commission wanted to be careful to not overbuild parking to begin with. Gas prices are going up every day. Maybe more people are truly going to start using alternative modes. But what they did was put in place essentially a plan that land-banked areas for parking, so if future residents of Barra Wood do have problems with parking, we have the solution. It's been approved, it's been thought through. They talked about landscaping. They talked about protection of the ravine, and the plan was really driven in large part in order to protect the ravine. They also talked about open space within the development and actually set a requirement for building footprints in this development to not exceed more than 20% of the overall site. Footprint coverage in this development is actually less than would be allowed in the adjacent Northmore Neighborhood. They talked about bicycle and pedestrian links to the existing bike paths and to the neighborhoods. They talked about assuring the completion of the renovation and adaptive reuse of Old Main, since that was the driver behind the density that is being recommended for this project. They talked about the structure of the Declaration of Covenants and the fact that there would be a master declaration and then some sub-declaration of covenants, some sub-associations that would really provide a strong framework to ensure that all the operational aspects of this development long-term were covered. They talked about the adjacent city parcels. The mayor already addressed their key concern, the 2.8-acre wooded parcel. The Plan Commission felt important, felt it was important that, because of the density being granted in Barra Woods, that that was a key buffer and should remain, should be formally acknowledged as part of South Park and be clarified that that, in fact, is part of the master plan for South Park. And finally, the Plan Commission talked about sequencing of construction and added a number of conditions of approval that are before you tonight that deal with that issue. Plan Commission talked about other things, like road configuration and the specifics, but I wanted to at least give you a list of the key points on which their discussion focused. This is the proposed overall site plan. To orient you, this is Old Main. The property essentially divides into two parcels. This is really the higher-density area. The larger buildings are focused around Old Main. The ravine runs through here, and this is the portion of the development that really steps down, steps down in density, in building massing, and in building height. As the Plan Commission talked about the site and the density, the more they talked about it, they realized that this development really is different than most other developments, is very different than a typical subdivision. What they focused on is really the building footprints. They acknowledged that without Old Main, this property is zoned R4, and we're probably looking at 12 to 15 single-family homes in this area. However, the initial development parameters, the city established for this property, said that Old Main... that Old Main needed to be preserved. The Plan Commission talked a lot about the overall density and concluded that with respect to Old Main, the building is already there, and it really didn't matter whether there were thirty-seven units in Old Main or fifty-two. What was important is that the density would be enough to ensure the long-term preservation of Old Main. However, the Plan Commission did look carefully at the northern part of the property, which is the closest to the R1 zoning in the Northmore Neighborhood, and they established a lower density for this area. The R1 zoning district allows a maximum density of 4.6 units per acre. The Plan Commission established a maximum density of the north half of the property, twelve acres, at 3.0 units per acre. The Plan Commission did assure that the front lawn would be preserved, they really focused on preserving the streetscape of the development. In discussing density, the Plan Commission talked a lot about these three buildings in this area. They looked at many massing models, they really studied whether it would be better to eliminate one or more of those buildings, whether it would be better to reduce the height of those buildings, and after study over, that spanned several months, they concluded that really this is the best way to create a development that really pays reverence to Old Main and incorporates Old Main as part of the development, as opposed to allowing it to really stick out of the development as a white elephant. These buildings stepped down slowly from Old Main and again to lower density in this The Plan Commission, in your ordinance, you have a number of conditions of approval. When they came out of the Plan Commission, I believe there were fourteen conditions of approval. Those conditions have been reviewed, clarified by the city attorney, they are incorporated in your ordinance. In general, they focus on technical issues, assuring that appropriate permits, both from the city and from outside agencies, are obtained, that all plans have final approval. They address density, and again, they address density in various ways. They establish a maximum density. The conditions recognize that we don't know exactly how many units are ultimately going to be in this development, so by establishing a cap and by establishing limits on densities in different parts of the development, the Plan Commission really felt that that created a structure that would assure a density that was compatible with the surrounding area. The density discussion also provided for a number of setback requirements. Again, those are enumerated in your conditions of approval. The conditions also deal with operational issues. They speak to the fact that the association will be responsible for enforcement of parking, for instance, as well as various other operational issues. They speak to the sequencing of construction, again, to address the current concern that Old Main is stabilized, is renovated, and continues to be built out in coordination with the new development. And finally, the conditions of approval speak to future architectural reviews and approvals. It is important to note that there really has been a parallel track with the work of the Plan Commission over the last fifteen months. The Historic Preservation Commission has also been working closely with the developer and has approved a conservation plan, has approved a rehabilitation plan, has approved conceptual plans for all of the building types, and has approved final plans for, I believe, two of the building types. I would call your attention to the first part of the ordinance where you see about a dozen or so exhibits that will actually be incorporated into the ordinance. We use this approach with the Amberly Woods development, and in this development, you're seeing us use that approach to even a greater extent. Ultimately, the exhibits that will be attached to this will be very detailed plans that deal with not only engineering issues, but landscape issues, tree removal issues, the architecture of the various buildings, and if we were to see a new developer step in for a portion of this site or all the site, the city will have a very strong framework. You will be very clear what you have approved, and the city will really be in the driver's sight to ensure that this development is built out in a way that it was consistent with the representations that have been made and with your approvals. Finally, this is a photo of one of the many models that the Plan Commission saw. We are essentially standing at the cemetery in this area, looking toward Old Main, and you see the various larger buildings, the smaller buildings, the ravine runs through this area. You see a tremendous amount of green space that, again, is very different than a standard subdivision. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I know that the developer is also here, would be happy to answer questions. If you choose to do so tonight, you have a unanimous recommendation before you from the Plan Commission, it will be appropriate to grant first reading of the ordinance. That ordinance does incorporate approval of the final plan of subdivision and the special use permit. We will refine the ordinance, make any adjustments that you suggest tonight. You'll see some dates and some other blank spaces in there that we still need to work through, and we will return to you with this ordinance at your next meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. I know the boards and commissions and yourself have done a tremendous amount of work on this, and I want to thank you for it. It is an important project to the city, and we've got a good product at the end. And thank you, Bob, for the development you've created here. I think it'll be a true tribute to this city. Questions? Comments?
I'd like to start, Kathy. Can you go, in terms of parking and the backup parking, I was a little unsure of where and just how that plan is. I like it, but I just was a little unsure.
This is a little difficult to see. The parking plan provides for, I believe it's 370 spaces up front. I may have my numbers a little off, but they're all in your staff report. There are approximately a hundred spaces that will be provided under Old Main. Each of the new units will also have garage spaces. I believe those garages will provide space for about 130, 135 cars. And there will be about 110 on-street spaces. They are reflected by yellow here on this plan. We've worked through this plan very carefully with both engineering staff, police, and fire to ensure that the on-street spaces are away from intersections, away from curves, away from the bridges across the ravine, and those on-street spaces are intended for visitors. They would have the same regulations as on-street parking in the city, so there would be no parking, no on-street parking from 3:00 AM to 5:00 IM, I believe, is the hours. So, this would be the approved plan. This is what would be built out at the onset. In the event that the 370 spaces were found to be not enough, and that determination really is going to be made by those residents, because this isn't a situation where you're going to have residents or visitors parking in other neighborhoods, that's highly unlikely. In the event that the residents are unhappy with the amount of parking, this land-banked parking plan would be part of the approvals. It has not yet been modified, consistent with the Plan Commission's direction, which would remove the spaces in this area. But there would be the opportunity to, with, after a public hearing by the council, to create spaces that would cut in slightly to some of the green space areas. Again, the Plan Commission chose not to create those spaces up front, simply because they didn't want to overbuild parking. But there are a number of areas that have been identified as spaces where additional parking spaces beyond the 370 could be created.
And potential owners will be notified of this in advance, that they could possibly have additional parking outside their units instead of green spaces?
The Declaration of Covenants would spell out the process by which this additional parking could be established and would spell out the responsibility for paying for those spaces as well.
Thank you.
Kathy, there is so much that was addressed by the Plan Commission that it's almost overwhelming for us to start looking at each of the bullet points that you put up there. But, and excuse me for asking a question that might be looking down the line a little bit as opposed to what the Plan Commission looked at, but here it goes. One of the things that concerns me is the uniformity or possibly the variety of construction design among the different types of buildings that are going to be in here. Was there any discussion at all, I know that may be more for the building review board, perhaps, but was there any discussion about varying the frontage of some of the properties so that if somebody is standing at the cemetery and looking down the plaisance, they don't just see the same kind of building right, left, and front?
You actually, I believe you raised that during the City Council's discussion of tentative approval. We did pass that comment along to the Historic Preservation Commission, who, again, has looked at conceptual plans of all of the buildings. And actually, although the buildings follow a consistent architectural style, you do have buildings of significantly different massings, significantly different heights, and very different types. You see this unique crescent-shaped building, so the Historic Preservation Commission was aware of your comment, of your direction, and they will continue to be made aware of that as they proceed through further review of these buildings.
Kathy, you mentioned that sequencing of construction was a major issue for the Planning Commission, and it's of some concern to me as well, particularly to ensure that Old Main stays on track as the entire site is developed. And I know that the proposed ordinance deals with this at some length. Frankly, I've read it twice, and I got just as lost the second time as I did the first. And I wonder if, and I did ask you before the meeting if you had such a sort of a graphic timeline, and I know you don't have anything now, but if it would be possible to prepare that for our next meeting, just to give us this, you know, sort of a very graphic representation of, you know, how things will be sequenced so that, and again, my concern is that Old Main just doesn't fall behind. Clearly, the preservation of Old Main is the real purpose here from the City Council's standpoint, and I just want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't get sort of left behind in the process. And I'm sure that the proposed ordinance addresses that properly, but I'd like to sort of see it if I could.
Sure, and we do have a graphic that I don't have with me tonight, was provided by the developer. I know we've made some clarification adjustments to some of the language, so we will recraft that, and we will have that for you when this comes back before you.
Great, thank you.
I just had one brief comment, and you don't have to answer tonight, but I had noted in the Plan Commission report reference to the city triangle parcel. And I'm just, you know, if we can be prepared to discuss what consideration we're receiving for that, if we're in fact going to give that to the, or sell it, or whatever.
And when this comes back to you for final approval, we will also have a fee schedule, much as we did with Presbyterian Homes as one of the exhibits, and we will certainly incorporate that into it.
Great.
But the recommendation of the Plan Commission, and I believe it was supported by the City Council during tentative approval, is to look for an equitable way to transfer the triangle piece to Barra Woods, to ensure that it's, the maintenance responsibility is transferred and it's maintained in a consistent way with the great lawns. We will bring that back before you.
And that will be subject to a conservation easement as well, I presume, the triangle?
I don't know that we've spelled that out, but we can certainly look at that. The triangle-
It's not really developable, I should think, but-
It is not, it will have a connection through it to the existing bike and pedestrian path, but it does, actually, there is language in there that says it could not be built upon, but we can look at that further, see if we want to strengthen that.
Well, that's the objective, clearly, so however that should be handled.
I mean, just a couple of comments on it. This project kind of, I think, to look at comparable projects in terms of architecture, I was just whispering in David's ear, it really reminds me a little of St. Mary's Lake Seminary out in Mundeline, where you had consistent architecture throughout the, well, it's not a project, but it's just a phenomenal piece of property. It's really a real jewel that very few people have the privilege of seeing. Secondly, it does remind me a little of Fort Sheridan, where architecture was consistent, even though there's different housing sizes and building types that was built throughout the fort in its early years. I think that was really the strength in Fort Sheridan, is the consistency and the style that did change for different uses, but it was consistent, and I think that's, I think the real strength, and just to kind of counter Stu's comments, I think that I prefer to see that consistent architecture, though the building sizes are different.
We agree again.
Oh, you and I. He's the best.
Any other comments?
Is that all you could find to disagree about tonight?
That was it.
He must have a basketball game.
I'm still looking forward to seeing the last half of the game.
You're gonna lose that one.
I just want to echo what Alderman Elliott said here. I think the phasing plan is important, and I too have gone through it in a fair amount of detail and think I have a good handle on it, but I think seeing some more detail on that is essential. But, you know, I think what the Planning Commission and Mr. Shaw have come up with seem to go a long way to ensuring that, you know, Old Main will be rehabbed and preserved, which is certainly a primary goal of this development.
Any other comments? I know we have public here, does anyone from the public wish to comment before we can finish our discussion?
Yes, sir.
My name is Sandy Gannon. I live at 650 Northmore, and I guess I have a question. Mr. Mayor, you said that the South Park Woods would be now become part of South Park?
It already is part of South Park.
It already is part of it.
Sorry, the master plan.
Has there been a recommendation that a conservation easement be placed on that, or is the Park Board just going back to square one and what could happen to it?
Vic, I will turn that over to you, but really, we don't, we couldn't tie future councils to that, but I'll turn it over to you, Vic.
Yes, ordinarily, with city property, we do not have those types of impositions. That's something that the council itself would have as a regulatory matter for any kind of its parks. I think the Park Board, as you mentioned at the outset, will be reviewing this for purposes of determining what the use might be, and it can be continued as a passive use with the open space, but that's really for the Park Board to make a recommendation to the council on.
So, essentially, all of us that are concerned about preserving that as a natural landscape now have to go back to square one and deal with the Park Board. Is that what I'm understanding?
I don't know if you need to go back to square one. I mean, you have two former chairmen of the Park Board sitting at the council, and we've been big advocates of keeping that as, you know, open space. It has been that, it was acquired for a park, it's going to be maintained as a park, but the city attorney indicated that in thirty years, there's nothing to prevent the future council from saying, this is a better idea, we need to put a clinic here that's going to cure cancer, and I think you're going to have to deal with that at that time. But I would feel very comfortable, if I was a Northmore subdivision resident, that that's going to remain as open space well into the foreseeable future.
I hope you're right. I think a lot of the residents would like a little more assurance of that, because it's certainly been up in question through the discussions of all this Barra project.
I think if I'm not mistaken, we can't legally put an easement on ourselves because it really doesn't do anything. It has no effect. So, you know, for us to do that wouldn't give residents any more security than they currently have.
There's a fancy term called the doctrine of merger that would preclude that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
My name is Celarino Baza Potero. I live at 765 Greenview Place. In regard to the woods, I think I would like to bring another concern, which is the damage down- done while the construction is being taken place. That should be somehow ensured that the forest per se stays as it is. I think it's easy to say we open a space, but it's going to be damaged because there's going to be act on, upon the construction. That should be taken care of too. And we are just not allowed to say, "We are going to do this construction and the woods will stay pristine." That is not going to happen. It has to be an insurance that upon construction and upon development of the property, the woods stay as they are. And I fear that with this amount of construction, that might not happen, and it's very likely not to happen. And we want to have some reassurance that that is the case as residents of the area.
Kathy, you want to take that one?
Sure. There will be a water main that will be extended through the woods that's necessary to create a looped water system. However, that water main will be augured. In addition, we will review construction plans that will create, or use chain link fence to protect the woods to assure that during construction, the impact on that woods is minimized.
I don't think he was just talking about the woods. I think he was talking about the whole, the project as a whole.
As with any development project, we will have extensive tree protection, vegetation protection, in this case, ravine protection plans that we developed. We will have pre-construction meetings. We will have extensive site inspections before any construction ever occurs. So certainly with all the care and attention that has been given by the Plan Commission, they directed very clearly that we need to make sure that the plans are followed. So that is part of our normal process.
I would also like to bring the attention to the density, please, for a moment. If I can see the diagram for the density, please. And the diagram, the photo that you show looking from the cemetery, please. You show that view, if I can have a pointer, if I can have a point, yeah, this view is misleading, because you can see that the open spaces on this particular view are much more open than the ones on the right. I think you have chosen a very good view to show the open spaces, but you go to the next, it's totally crowded. You can see that right away. So I fear that, if I can have a pointer, please. You have chosen this view, of course, because this is more open, but look on the other side next door. This is totally crowded. There's no view here. It's totally crowded. There's hardly any open spaces in this area here. So I want to point that attention, because the density has been, you know, this is, of course, the best view, but I recommend, well, I recommend, I cannot recommend, I suggest that the density should be looking up on, because this is very uneven. This is the best view, but this is not as nice and as clean as it's green. Please, let's look into that. I'm afraid it has to be looked into. Thank you very much. As a matter of fact, I'm glad you put that up. You can see that. It's looking from this view, which is, of course, quite open, but look at the crowdedness on this area here. Certainly unfair to show this view only. Look at the other one.
Kathy, before you start, being on the Plan Commission when it first started and on the Planning Community Program, I've been involved in this for four years. We have gone through very thoroughly, and I think we really represented the residents as well as worked with the developer on a variety. If you would have seen this when it first came out and the density-
I've seen it, sir. I've been here from the very beginning.
And so you would know what I think the Plan Commission did a tremendous job working with the developer of making this plan. It's not perfect, but I think it's well-served, and the density and the masses of going down and the protection of the cemetery, the triangle, everything else, I think is well documented and well done.
Well, like I said, we have our reservations.
Thank you.
Abby Fosnok, 451 Beverly. We're Kitty Corner from Old Main across Wesley Road. I don't see where the bike path access is on this. If Kathy could show us.
There will be bike access required through the city's triangle piece. It's difficult to see, but there is a path through here. There will also be a connection later on to the bike path in this area. I know that before the Plan Commission, there was a suggestion that there'd be parking provided, perhaps in this area for people to park and then get on the bike path. The Plan Commission felt that, given the fact that South Park is just to the north and that there is adequate parking there, that that really is a better place to get on the bike path than through a private development.
I'd like to comment on that. I still would like to see four or five parking places on this. If it is city-owned land, then that's not private, that's public. The parking at South Park is the only parking provided for non-pay parking for any of the accesses to the McClory Bike Path in Lake Forest. If you mentally walk down, starting at Old Elm, you've got commuter parking you have to pay for, and that should be a priority for commuters and so forth. There's none at McCormick Woods and on up. So South Park's the only place. That parking place is partially mud, inadequately if at all paved. It is not plowed even when the bike path is plowed, so it's not a practical place to use in the winter. In the summer, once the baseball season starts, it's heavily impacted with users of the ballfields, which is perfectly reasonable, logical. I have sent each of you an email memo with my thoughts on it. I gather the decision on this will not be set in stone tonight, and I really want you to reconsider this issue of parking just a few places in there. Remind you that there has always been parking there. There used to be the old South Shore Line train station, and the parking was initially put in then. This is a public recreational facility that was funded with federal, state, county, and city funds, so it's not just for the exclusive use of Lake Foresters. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Any other comments this evening? Okay, I'll turn it back to the council. Gentlemen, what's your wish here?
Well, I'll make that basketball motion right now. I'd like to make a motion to approve on first reading the two agenda items, or the first agenda item on the Bear Woods development.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading has passed. Next item on the agenda, consideration of an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area for the Bear Woods development located at Wesley and Sheridan Roads, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. Again, Ms. Cerny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item associated with the Bear Woods development, also before you for first reading. In the past, you've been the vehicle for establishing a special service area for District 67. Most recently, you did this with the Fitz Morris Development, Amberly Woods Development, before that Regions Row and Middle Fork Farm. This is an agreement negotiated between the developer and the district. City is not party to those negotiations and does not enforce the special service district. However, we do provide the mechanism for doing the appropriate notice and establishing the special service area. If you choose to do so, be appropriate to grant first reading of the ordinance that begins on page 53 of your packet.
We could also waive first reading and just pass it, could we not? Vic?
I would recommend not. It should go in tandem with the special use permit.
Motion to grant first reading.
Kathy, excuse me, I just had one question, if I may, and just one of these, I hope it's not a too hyper-technical kind of thing. I was looking at the overall site plan, and the parcels are neatly broken down into groups A, B, and C, which are called the garden homes, and then Group E is a carriage home, or carriage homes, and then you have the townhomes and the condominiums. Now, I jumped over Building D, which is called, according to the site plan, a multifamily building at Boulevard Terminus Northwest Loop. And I only bring that up because in looking at the ordinance on Section 3, when it talks about the rates for the different kinds of homes, it mentions townhomes, which are one of this group. It mentions the carriage homes, which are here, and it mentions the garden homes, but it doesn't pick up, and it mentions the condominiums, but it doesn't pick up what's Building D, multifamily building. And maybe Building D falls within one of the other groups, but the words aren't there, and I want to make sure that every piece of property that's supposed to be picked up is picked up.
Why don't we look at that between first and final reading?
Okay.
Had a motion?
Second.
Had motion and seconded to establish the special service area. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item on the agenda is consideration of a report and recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission to designate 1536 South Estate Lane as a local historic landmark. Peter, good evening. How are you?
KU alum Peter Catan, correct.
Go Jayhawks.
How could you tell? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have a copy of the landmark nomination in your packet, so I'll just touch on some of the highlights this evening. This is a landmark nomination request for the property at 1536 South Estate Lane. This is a property that was part of the original Lasker Estate. Albert Lasker was a gentleman who was a, really a pioneer in the advertising business. He had the idea and the concept for advertising through radio, made his fortune in the early 1900s, and bought about 500 acres of property south of Everett Road, north of Old Mill Road. Some of the estate extended south of Old Mill land to the east of Estate Lane extending all the way west towards the tollway. He, in 1925, built what became known as Mill Road Estate, no, excuse me, Mill Road Farm, which was one of the largest and considered one of the largest and grandest estates on the North Shore. He had David Adler, who we certainly know as an important architect, design and build all of the buildings on the estate, including what is the main estate house, very recognizable along Estate Lane. The property that is being recommended for landmark nomination was originally the Milk House. It was built in 1925, located three properties north of Old Mill Road. And what was interesting about this estate was that it consisted not only of the formal parts of the property, including formal gardens and grounds, it also included an 18-hole golf course, which was considered one of the most difficult courses in the country at the time, and also, which incidentally consisted of most of the properties that are now along West Fork and some of these other side streets that are through here, also extending eastward towards Fairway, which is where the name of that road comes from, but also included a working farm. And the property that's recommended for landmark nomination was the Milk House. Milk House was where the production of milk and butterfat occurred on the property, and up until 1940 was in use. In 1940, Albert Lasker very generously donated his estate to the University of Chicago. The University of Chicago owned it for several years, and then in the mid-1940s began to develop and sell off this estate. In 1946, the Milk House was purchased by Jerome Cerny, who is also a recognized significant architect in the community and practiced in the '30s on into the '60s. Cerny was the first to actually take the Milk House, which was really a utilitarian building at the time, and convert it into a single-family residence. There were a number of owners between Cerny and the Burnhams, who purchased the property in 1988 and are the current property owners. The Burnhams have put extensive time and resources into restoring the Milk House, also constructing an addition, a garage addition, which was, this is the maybe most recognizable facade, this is a building that sits right up along Estate Lane. Couple of years ago, architect David Polton designed an addition, which was an attached garage, which is shown in this photograph, which was constructed and very sympathetically blended with the original structure. So this nomination was in front of the commission earlier this month, and the commission did unanimously recommend approval based on the architectural significance of the house, based on the significance of the original property owner, and the significance of the original architect, David Adler. So this does come before you for a, with a unanimous recommendation for approval. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive the first reading and grant final approval. I can answer any questions.
No objection from neighbors?
There were no objections from neighbors.
This is phenomenal. This is phenomenal. This street's a great street. It's a real treasure in Lake Forest, and it's always a treat to drive down Estate Lane because of how tight it is and the coziness of it, and these people need to be, you know, commended and complimented.
Moved away first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Elliott.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Haddad.
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending the city code to add a new Chapter 53 establishing a city administrative hearing system. Chief Berger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. The draft of the ordinance begins on page 92 of your packet. This ordinance, while patterned after the, a very similar ordinance used in Highland Park since 2001, has been reviewed by the legal committee, the police department, and the city staff. We believe that the adoption of the ordinance will provide an effective and efficient alternative to prosecuting city code violations in Lake County Circuit Court. So that will allow the residents to come to actually these chambers and have their cases heard. You will also find in the packet, beginning on page 105, a PowerPoint presentation that was produced for the Highland Park City Council. Some of the numbers that I've used tonight, I've taken off of the Highland Park information just as a starting point. Highland Park's administrative hearing system has been established, was established in 2001, and the PowerPoint was produced in 2006, so approximately a year and a half ago. Highland Park had five years of data at the time. They had heard 3,000 cases over those five years. The police department will administer all the hearing process. We will not hire any extra personnel. We'll be able to do it in-house. The projected additional expenses that I can foresee at this time will come somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000. $10,000 of that would be software package so that we can track the cases, $10,000 for a hearing officer, and about $2,500 to print new tickets. The reason we're going to be printing the new tickets is so that the police department, building and zoning, the fire inspectors, everybody will use the same one then. The additional value to the residents, they'll be able to have a convenient place to have their cases heard. They won't have to go to Waukegan. They'll be able to come to City Hall here and be in front of the hearing officer here. We envision the hearing, the administrative hearing system, the ordinances that we envision using at first were Chapter 4, alcohol. And if you remember, this discussion started about a year ago when Alderman Widman and Alderman Elliott wondered if we could raise fines, particularly for alcohol violations. And so this is just a culmination of that. Chapter 6, which would be animals, so dog tickets, things like that. Chapter 9, which would be buildings, which covers building and zoning and community development issues. And Chapter 40, traffic. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions, gentlemen? I think this is an idea whose time has come.
How often would the hearings take place?
We envision them twice a month, Alderman.
In the time, time of day, would it be daytime, similar to what folks experience now?
Right. What we think is probably afternoon and then maybe evening to make it convenient.
Okay. And then I've got a, just a question for Vic. If a party elects to appeal a determination by the hearing officer, what body would have the review, you know, under the- the review, you know, under the Illinois Administrative Review Law?
It would go to the Circuit Court.
Joe, who ends up actually being the prosecutor on the different violations that are heard in front of a hearing officer?
The prosecutor would be the same city prosecutor we now use in Circuit Court, he would just do the hearings also.
And on, you know, from tree top, what's the economics that we're talking about in terms of what our potential revenue gain might be from doing it this way versus expenses that we're going to incur from doing it this way?
Right, and I believe, and I don't know for sure, I'd need a year or two of data, but I believe at the very least we'll be able to cover our expenses the first year. And after that, we might be over our expenses with revenue.
But we want to make sure this isn't a setup for revenue generating with the
That's correct. We're not here to generate revenue.
And you will cover moving violations as well as parking?
Yeah, it depends on what it is, Alderman. The reason we put the traffic in there, Chapter 40, was in case we wanted to do maybe a red light camera or something like that further down the road. We just wanted to leave ourselves open to that possibility.
Any further questions? The recommended action is to grant first reading of this ordinance. I have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next item is the award of a contract for the beach sweeper, or shall we call this the, you got one choice, take it or leave it, guys.
Evening, council. Mayor Romo, tonight I'm asking for the approval of the replacement of a 1985 beach cleaner. It is part of the capital equipment replacement program that you reviewed on March 17th. It also has been reviewed by the Public Works Committee two times. To briefly go over the why we're replacing the unit, it's 23 years old. It was a great unit for the first 20 years, the past three years we've really been struggling with it, it seems to break down just about every other week. We found out as we reviewed it, the new machine is really much more efficient, three times faster, from three miles an hour to nine, twice the horsepower, going from 30 to 64. Picks up smaller particle size, currently we pick up 5/8 of an inch, the new one goes to 3/8 of an inch, which actually will lift cigarette butts out of the sand, even though there's no smoking allowed down there, we get a lot of them that wash up at the water's edge, and that seems to be one of the areas we get a lot of complaints from. Currently, we use two employees to clean the sand, one to run the beach cleaner, which sifts the sand, the second to run a tractor that pulls a telephone pole behind it to smooth out the area behind the drag. Because we've had problems with this unit for the past three years, it's 23 years old, we think it's time, we bumped it on the capital equipment list a number of times, we think it's time to get it replaced. We are hoping to waive the bid process. I did call Alderman Marsh at lunch today to see if he had any suggestions. He had recommended that we check the internet to make sure that there are no other equipment capable. Originally, we had 35,000 hits under the word beach cleaner. As we went down, added the word mechanical, it cut it in half, we added the word one-yard hopper. We got to the point where it was something that worked for us, there was really only 11. Only one of those is a self-propelled unit. The other others all needed to have a tractor pull it. With a 65-horse PTO on the back, we currently don't have a tractor to that specification, we would have to order that. Talking to Mike Thomas, he said the cost of that would be about $45,000. And the units that were towed behind that met our specifications, that have, you know, we have a specific need to haul a certain amount through one end of the beach to the other to make the parking lots on each end. We also, in the case of ALY or seaweed, we want to be able to dump into a large dump truck to haul it to the landfill, we want to be able to dump eight feet six inches high. By the time it meets our specifications, there was really only the one that does what we need it to do, and that's the one from Charrington. So after going through the internet, I do still believe that there is going to be one sole vendor. They haven't had a price increase in 10 years, as of May 1st, it goes up $7,000. I do have the bid spec written, it could be in the paper tomorrow, if you choose to bid it out, we can. I think we might lose $7,000 and end up with the same unit, but I'm willing to do that if you'd like, I just wanted to bring it to you for your thoughts.
When can you get delivery?
We're making a lot of progress here.
You're scaring everybody. When can you get delivery on this? Can it be used this summer?
It could. We would take delivery in May.
I was surprised that they'll give you $9,000 on the trade-in for 23-year-old
Actually, they wouldn't give us a trade-in for the first four months, they must have, then they came back and looked at it, took some pictures of it, went back, and then two weeks later, they must have somebody who is interested in on it, and they're willing to give us $9,000 for it.
Gift horse in the mouth.
Okay, the stack recommendation?
I would like to make a motion.
You would?
Yes.
Historic.
We're afraid of this, so go ahead. I'll second the motion.
The motion is to?
To waive the bid process and contract to Charrington Enterprises.
Did you want him to save, say that?
No, roll call vote, David, I'm sorry, this is, we can't have any debate on this any further.
Our time saying that one.
I think, I think Parks and Recs has made incredible progress, so we're getting even better.
Do we have a second?
Seconded and I call for the roll call vote.
I'm ready. It's not to me, you are.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Loubee?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
And fresh from the first half of the basketball game, I turn it over to Michael Thomas, who barely made it in without my chastising him for being late. What's the score?
Thirty twenty-eight, KU, two minutes, 31 seconds left. Phenomenal game.
Moving on to manholes.
Thank you for that, Michael.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, this evening's staff is requesting city council approval for items that are in our FY 2009 budget. The first item is in our operating budget, in our water and sewer section, for lining both sanitary and storm manholes. We have approximately 35 manholes in the city. This actually is our sixth year doing the project. There's a typo, I had written fifth, it's actually our sixth year doing it. We went out to bid and received competitive bids. The low bid, Advanced Underground, did the project for us last year, they did an excellent job, very good with the residents, very clean. We've inspected those manholes since and have found no problems, so we are recommending that they again be awarded the bid based on the lowest responsible bidder.
How many manholes do we have?
3,500, 3,542. So what we're primarily doing now are the brick manholes. There are some precast manholes out west that have some cracks that we need to give some attention to, but a lot of them are on the east side, the old brick ones that we, we line, and they're good forever, so.
Was Red Horse going to do all of them in the city at that?
No, they, well, with that price, we'll, we'll get about 75 manholes completed.
They just were so high in comparison with everybody else, it's just amazing.
Oh, Red, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes. There must be a new way to add it.
It's been, make a motion to accept?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Loubee?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Next item is award of a bid for modifications to Bluff Edge and Southwest Sewer Station Lift.
These two projects, again, are listed in the FY 2009 capital improvement program. They are with regards to two of our four lift stations. The first one, the Bluff Edge, it's replacing some of the equipment. It only has six homes tied to it, but we've had some problems with the actual structure that all the equipment sits in, so we're going to tear off the top, put a cover on, and put a large basically what amounts to sump pump system in, at Bluff Edge. We competitively bid it, Kino &amp; Sons was, was the low bid. For the second one, Southwest Sewer, out at Old Mill and West Fork, that is keeping the structure but replacing the equipment that is in there, the backup generator, the motor control center, and the pumps. The reason we're bringing it to you now is that for all three items, it's a very long lead time for ordering. It's upwards of eight to 12 weeks, so we'd like to get going on that simply to get the order in. Once the equipment comes, it's about a two-week project, but we again competitively bid those. Both projects, low bid was Kino &amp; Sons, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mike, how many homes are served by the Southwest Sewer Lift Station?
I did not do a count, but it's a very large area. It's, it's all of the fourth ward, if not a little bit more.
Okay, because it's really remarkable that, I mean, if you have four or six homes for Bluff Edge, you're really talking about, you know, 10 to 12 grand per house to?
And we looked into the other option of possibly providing some type of overhead plumbing for these homes, that would do the same type of thing. Overhead plumbing is about $25,000 per home, and that was about two years ago. So this, quite honestly, this, this lift station simply pumps it over to Villatercum at the end of circle, to the VT Lift Station, and from there, that's a much larger station that takes it all and pumps it.
What is the rule generally on serving, you know, very small clusters of housing? I mean, obviously, somehow back in 1967, we took on a responsibility for serving this. Are there a lot of situations like that around?
No, they're not, they're not. This is, this is a very unique one. We, again, have got Spruce and Sheridan, Villatercum, Southwest Sewer, and Bluff Edge, those are our only lift stations.
And we can't pull a comment and just sort of turn it back?
Not going to do it.
I didn't say that. This thing lasts in 41 years, it'll last another 41 years.
Create a sticky situation.
Don't give a lot of backup within the city, okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Loubee?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is award of a contract of bus transportation services for the city's annual program.
Thank you, Mayor Romo, members of the council.
I'm here tonight to ask for approval of our city programming busing bids. This year, the staff were directed to bid out our busing for the first time for the Recreation Department, as well as Croya and the Senior Center. And we were, currently, we use various types of busing, starting with Parks and Recreation Department, we use for our summer camp, for the routes, field trips, and our daily shuttles. Croya uses busing for their monthly trips and their retreats, and the Senior Center uses busing for their monthly trips as well. Currently, the Recreation Center and Croya use a standard school bus for all of our needs, and the Senior Center uses a 28-passenger charter bus. The cost for this service is, comes out of each department's operating budget, or it's charged back through fees for the various trips. Through the process, we did receive two bids. The costs are on the screen. The Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Busing, First Student bid the project at $58,975.84, and the other bidder was Olson Transportation, and they bid all of our summer camp busing at $40,973. For the Croya trips, First Student bid $5,984 compared to Olson Transportation, $9,595. And the Senior Center only received one bid. First Student doesn't currently offer the 28-passenger charter bus, they didn't have that service, while Olson Transportation came in at $575 per trip. So as we reviewed the bids and checked the references, both of the bids has come underneath the fiscal year 2009 budgeted amounts. The First Student bid has come in underneath the Croya current actual expenses for FY 2008, while Olson Transportation has come in above what they've currently spent. And the amount per trip for the Senior Center also has come in higher than what they are currently spending for their trips. So after reviewing all of this, the staff recommend the award of the Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Busing to the low bidder, Olson Transportation, in the amount of $40,973. We recommend the award of the Croya trips and retreat busing to the lowest bidder, First Student, in the amount of $5,984. And we recommend that we reject the bid for the Senior Center trips and continue with what they are currently doing, contracting out through various companies for each trip. Any questions?
So we saved about $18,000 on the bid process, it seems?
Correct, very surprised.
See, it works.
Amazing, it's an amazing concept, competition.
Any other questions or comments? Motion to accept?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Loubee?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other items for the council? We have two more minutes according to Mr. Swarthout, so hearing done, we'll finish two minutes early. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council meeting is adjourned. Guys, get to those two.[1685.21]